Live streamed and publicly broadcast. The recording of this meeting will also be available on our website in the future. Calling the meeting to order, and this special meeting of council was called to consider the 2025 draft budget as well as a closed session report regarding union negotiations. We will begin the meeting by sharing the land acknowledgement statement. We would like to begin by respectfully acknowledging that Dufferin County resides within the traditional territory and ancestral lands of the Tiantanani and Arandaran, Honishani, and the Anishnabis peoples. We also acknowledge that various municipalities within the county of Dufferin reside within the treaty lands named under the Haldeman deed of 1784 and two of the Williams Treaties of 1818, Treaty 18, the Nautuasaga Purchase, and Treaty 19, the Agestos Treaty. These traditional territories upon which we live and learn are steeped in rich indigenous history and tradition. It is with this statement that we declare to honor and respect the past and present connection of indigenous people with its land, its waterways, and resources. We will now move to the roll call. I'll ask the clerk to do the roll call.
Thank you, Warden. Counselor Creelman?
Present.
Counselor Gardhouse?
Present.
Counselor Garrettts?
Present.
Counselor Hall is absent. Counselor Hawkins?
Present.
Counselor Little?
Present.
Counselor McLean?
Present.
Counselor Mills?
Present.
Counselor Nix?
Here.
Counselor Post?
Present.
Counselor Wrench?
Here.
Counselor Solomon?
Present.
Counselor Taylor?
Present.
Counselor White?
Present.
And Warden Horner.
Present.
Thank you.
Moving to the approval of the agenda, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Garrettts, seconded by Solomon. All those in favor, any post, seeing none, the agenda and addendum distributed for the January 30th, 2025 meeting of council be approved. Down to declaration of interest by members. Members may declare pecuniary interests now. Please state the interest and general nature thereof. Declarations must be verbal and in writing and can be emailed to the clerk. Yes, Ms. Taylor?
I previously declared that I have a conflict, so anything resolved, anything about salaries, I will step aside, as I have a family member who works for the county.
Thank you. Public question period. Were there any questions submitted? And we have just, Mr. Garista, would you like to make a presentation? Or a question? Ask a question.
Can I do it from here? I think everybody's gonna hear me anyway.
You have to have a mic.
All right, no problem. Anyway, the only thing I have to say tonight, I see that the tax was 5.6, and now it's 5.16. So I would hope that this council tonight will lower those numbers. I can tell you, we need a break in Dufferin County and all the municipality around. So please, do whatever you can to lower those numbers. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll now move on to presentation and consideration of reports, and the big one is the budget. I hope, I've been very happy with the questions that we've been getting about the budget. It certainly shows that you are concerned about how we're spending our money and have been seeking clarification from staff on items that you had some questions about. So, well done, those of you who've submitted the questions. Amy, have you got your bulletproof vest on tonight? We'll see. So let's pass it to Amy, and she's going to update us on some of the changes.
Thank you, Warden. Okay, I have prepared a presentation which I hope answers a lot of your questions that you have had. Of course, feel free to ask questions throughout if required. Okay, as you all recall, we did start with a status quo budget of 3.2%. With proposed additions, we were at 5.6. And then on January 9th, we met and we made a number of changes. Those included adding $40,000 for household hazardous waste events, adding additional courthouse rent revenue. We made a couple of changes to climate, which had no impact on the levy. We removed the bike lanes. I did have a couple of questions on this one, so I did take a closer look at it today. Technically, the $100,000 could be more. However, the issue is future years. Based on current capital asset plans for roads, our levy requirements increase significantly over the next couple of years, from 2.7 in 2024 to 2.8 million, sorry, in 2025 to 3.7 in 2026, and then leveling off around 4.5 million in 2027. The roads plan is currently under review as we look at the impact of the road rationalization study, so I'm a little hesitant to decrease this by much, otherwise the impact in future years will be higher. We also discussed the housing strategy project lead and funding that position from rate stabilization reserve, and then we made an adjustment to the Dufferin Capital Work Plan with no impact. This resulted in a net decrease of approximately $210,000, which left us at the 5.16% after I'm gonna go over the new items included in the budget as well. I did not include any of the previously committed items. I just included the positions as shown here and the new to 2025 items. I thought it might be helpful to show both the 2025 and the 2026 costs, so it's easier for you to see full year impact, especially when it comes to staffing. So in relation to staffing, we have the four proposed positions, the development review position in engineering, project manager in facilities, accounting manager in finance, and medical secretary in long-term care. Are there any questions on those positions? Seeing none. So new to 2025, we had the guide rail inspection study. The cost of that is $60,000, and we're funding it from rate stabilization, so there's no impact on the levy. We have the road patrol software of 18,500. That'll be an ongoing thing each year. The new operations center. So we estimated $20 million with debt payments starting in 2026 of approximately $490,000. This amount is truly just an estimate to show that there will be future impacts. We will need to borrow separately for the land and construction. We've been raising development charges for the project for quite some time. We can apply the development charges to the actual construction to reduce our borrowing needs, or we can do what we've done in the past and apply it directly to the debenture payments, reducing the impact on the levy. Two things I want to note is the land costs are not DC eligible and will be 100% on the tax levy. Secondly, we can, we plan to look for funding to help offset the construction costs that would ultimately reduce our borrowing needs. In relation to ongoing operating costs, we don't have quite enough information to estimate these at the time. However, we will provide these before a final decision is made on the project. In terms of potential annual borrowing costs, to borrow $20 million at 4% over 25 years would result in approximately $1.59 million in annual payments. This amount will increase, decrease a little bit over time. If the interest rate were 3%, the same parameters, the annual payment would drop to just under $1.4 million, which is almost a $200,000 less per year. So it really, it's difficult to know based on the interest rates. The important thing to note in the operations center is that we are not committing to anything with this budget. We recognize that this is a big commitment, and you need more information prior to committing to it. I include it in the budget because we don't, if we don't, we can't move forward, and also to ensure that we are all aware that there will be future year impacts. The numbers included in the budget are truly estimates. Once we have more detail, we will provide a multi-year plan for you to review and approve. I also included welcome signs in this list. It's not new, but I just wanted to include it because it was an item that did come up. The $200,000 is the value of work. It is not the levy requirements, because we've been raising money over the last few years. Engineering has additional revenue of approximately $100,000. We have the climate risk assessment, which is $65,000 and to be funded by rate stabilization reserve. Atlbrox Center renovations, we have $750,000 in 2025 and $6.5 million in 2026 to come from debt, so no levy impact at this point. The $750,000 is intended to cover design and permits, et cetera, which will provide a more realistic construction cost for 2026. Estimates have been between $5 and $9 million, so we kind of picked something in between to include in the budget until we have more detail. Regardless, we will need to borrow. I do have some reserves we can apply to the project. If we were to borrow $7 million at 4%, the annual payments would be about $550,000. In terms of operating costs, we don't anticipate they will change much of current levels. And of course, similar to the operations center, we'll bring more detail before moving forward with that project.
Counselor Post?
Thank you. Just before we move away from this page, just a quick question. You had just mentioned that the welcome signs, that the $200,000 is the value of work, not the levy requirement. What's the levy requirement for that item, then? Because I don't think that was clear during the last meeting.
Through you, Chair. It's difficult to put an exact levy amount, because when we're determining the amount of levy, we look at all of the projects, but I could say probably maybe $50,000.
Counselor McLean?
Just a question on the Southern Operations Center. So I see in 2025, there's an allocation of zero. Does that mean, like, surely there must be some engineering work or some design work that's happening in the meantime, is there not?
Through you, Chair. Yes, we do have money, we do have money in there. We have a full $20 million in there, but we have it as coming from borrowing. So really, it's a cash flow issue. We will, if we move forward, then we will, once we need to borrow, we'll get construction loans to help fund it.
Okay. So the 20 million, all right, so it is allocated for this year. It's just, it wouldn't hit our tax levy or anything until the following year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counselor White?
Thank you, Warden. I was gonna talk about this a little bit later, but I can do it now. Seeing it's on the screen, I wanted to talk about the welcome signs as well. I brought it up at the last meeting. One of my concerns, the more I thought about it, the bigger my concern becomes, is this is a five-year program, sort of a continuation of a program that was started pre-COVID. And the more I think about it now, I wonder that if we don't have a different discussion about that, because I don't know that it's current, and I don't know that it makes sense in its current form, given the work we've done around economic development and the work Yao's department has done. I don't know if those signs are what his department may would want in those places moving forward, seeing they don't use the same logos that we have now, the new Dufferin Tourism logo, et cetera. So I'm not sure if that's something that we don't have a further discussion on, how we morph that into something more current down the road as well.
Is there somebody who wants to answer that?
Through you, Warden. I think Counselor White, you're raising some really good points, and there's probably some additional work to be done through the economic development team to look at what would be the most beneficial way to increase our, not just welcome signs, but to show the presence and the work that's being done around tourism and economic development. So removing that project as it currently is and turning it into something else is certainly something that, you know, if council wants to consider that, that we can work on during the year.
Amy, does that mean it would still be in there or not?
Through you, unless you tell me to take it out, I'm leaving it in.
So Counselor White, I think you're saying you want to leave it in, but maybe a better discussion about what should be on those signs?
Sure. I think for this year, it has to come out, because we'd have to start on a whole process of what goes on signs, where they go and whatnot, and work with the Economic Development Department to make that happen. So I don't know that it would be possible to even get it done in this fiscal year. So staying in after this fiscal year, probably, but I think it needs to be brought into something more current. I mean, that program is probably eight years old now, from its inception to where we are in the timeline right now, so maybe it is time for a rethink of it as well.
Should I ask Raj? Are you okay? Are you okay then?
Sure, I can.
Sorry, Chris. Counselor Garrettts?
Yeah. Your report says taking that out wouldn't impact the tax levy, though. Is that?
It just means we would need more money in the future.
So if we took that $200,000 out this year, will it reduce the levy?
I could drop it by 50 grand, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. So is that what we want to do?
I think, you know, Counselor White made a good point, so.
Counselor Mills?
Thanks, Warden. I guess the only concern I would have is if we're asking the Economic Development Department to do a rethink, that's probably not going to be done for free. So if we're taking that out this year, then I think we need to replace that with something to give them some resources to work with. I don't know what that would be, and in fairness, nobody probably does, because it's been thrown at them on the spot. But, I mean, if it really isn't impacting the levy anyway, is there a problem in leaving it in? And then, you know, if we have to dip into that a little bit to do a rebranding or a rethinking of this, you know, it's there.
Yes, I don't sense our total direction yet. Counselor Gardhouse?
In my mind, what you're doing is we're gonna still put some, are looking to put signs up, it's just that we're gonna redesign them. And that could be fairly onerous here. It could be just a matter of saying, hey, we got some new logos here. And so you go to the sign guys and they, and they'll just, it's all graphic, so that can be done. If I want a new sign, it takes me about five days, and they'll have it ready for me to go. Give them the details you want, and they'll change it on a weekly basis. So.
Not sure it's quite that easy.
I can get approval a lot easier than what maybe we can around this table. But actually, the logistics of it, it's just a matter of how much they rejig the, what we currently have. And without it going back to economic development, we don't know that, that detailed. I'm not sure that's an answer to move, how we're gonna move forward.
We're gonna hear from Raj for a minute here. Raj?
Through you, Warden. I appreciate all the comments, and I think what I would say is, with our new economic development strategy, with the investor's guide that's come out, I think we've come upon some new data and some new information that would inform where potentially the signs go, and those could be different from what was previously agreed upon, in addition to the branding exercise as well. So I think there could potentially be more work involved with regards to this whole exercise, but I'll leave it up to council. I just wanted to add those comments.
Counselor Post?
My only other comment would be, I mean, I think it's still something we can have further discussion about, because the items that were listed in here, too, aren't official council direction yet anyways. So if we add it to the list of things that we're gonna talk about, because there's other items that were removed that I still want to have conversation about, because they haven't been an official council motion yet.
Counselor White?
Just a comment that may or may not be helpful. Thank you, Warden. I'm not suggesting we take it out of the budget as a way to find magic money to lower the, you know, I brought it up, I was gonna bring it up later on a totally different discussion. I'm bringing it up solely for the reason of, it's an eight-year-old program. Do we want to go forward because it's in the budget alone, or do we want to give it a rethink before we go forward? That's where I'm coming from.
And I actually think, I see some alignment here. I think Raj is nodding her head that that's, needs a rethink, and there will be more discussion, and that can come back. So do I sense you want to leave it in? I'm seeing some heads nod, so, okay.
Okay, thank you. The last item is the EV charging stations. They are a cost of $625,000, with funding of $325,000 and a transfer from rate stabilization for the balance. And I would ask Scott if he was here, but I think it's contingent on funding, yeah. There will, of course, be future operating impact, but the cost of the charging stations has, is relatively minimal. Moving on to climate, we have included legal fees. They have been applying for lots of different grants and funding, so it's important to add some money to review some of the agreements that we're getting. We also have the Climate Master Plan of $250,000. We're having, we're applying $200,000 from rate stabilization for that. We have the Rain Barrel Subsidy Program at $25,000, a little bit of money for training software, the building retrofit study, which we shifted from focusing on municipal buildings to our housing buildings at no cost. It's funded by grant and rate stabilization reserve. The Household Hazardous Waste Depot, this is the mobile or the permanent household hazardous waste depot. We included $100,000 for consulting in 2025 with it coming from the waste reserve. There's been no decisions on this. I believe there's a report coming to council sometime in 2025 that will provide you with the opportunity to discuss 2026. The amount that's in for 2026 is an estimate, and it does include a, an amount from stabilizing, or from reserves to kind of step up, step up the increase, sorry. The next one is the Certification for the Sustainable Forest Initiative, at $7,000 for the first year and then $5,000 the year after, and then the Active Transportation Master Plan of $100,000, which we also have coming from reserves.
Any questions while we're on this page, or anything you need some clarification Counselor Wrench?
This is exciting. So the Rain Barrel Subsidy Program, I don't think that's necessary. I'd vote to take it out. I think you can get barrels for free. I don't know why the county needs to pay, buy barrels to then give to people. The question I had more was about the Climate Master Plan. I understand, it's a $250,000 program. Granted, we're taking $200,000 from the rate stabilization reserve, but I'm assuming we could apply those $200,000 somewhere else if we weren't going to take this on. So I sent an email in today, but yeah, Scott's not here, and he replied, but I, my question is more about what are the future costs that this Climate Master Plan will incur? And I didn't really get a clear answer. So I don't know if Sonia's able to answer that question.
I'm gonna let Sonia do that.
I'm more concerned about future costs on a lot of the things that we're doing in this budget, not necessarily the costs this year.
Through you, Warden. So the purpose of the study is, one, to update our previous Dufferin Climate Action Plan, and, two, to amalgamate both the Climate Action Plan and the Dufferin Adaptation Strategy into one cohesive plan, so that all of the action we're taking around climate work is coordinated and is done in a way that hopefully will ensure that we're not duplicating any effort or doing things in a one-off, as a one-off approach. The key components of that strategy are to update some of the data around our community greenhouse gas inventory to provide an assessment of current emissions, an update of the climate modeling data that helps us make decisions around projections, a scheduled update, again, to the plan, and also creating some high-level business cases for initiatives such as energy retrofits and other projects that would identify efficiencies and cost savings as we go forward. And also to create an evaluation and monitoring framework to track progress and measure success. Some of the outcomes or deliverables expected from that plan will help provide clear direction to our asset management and capital planning, so incorporating climate risks into long-term infrastructure planning and budgeting, and ensuring that we're, when we're making those capital investments, we're making them in a way that will be adaptive to climate change and to mitigate any risks that we see, creating hopefully an opportunity to provide operational efficiencies, so identifying cost savings and opportunities through improved energy management, fleet electrification, and facility retrofits, risk management around extreme weather events, providing data and information to support council and staff decision-making, and a way to help with municipal collaboration on any of these projects and to offer some guidance to any local municipalities who might want it with respect to climate change initiatives. So some of the efficiencies that we would hope to gain, again, reducing any kind of duplication or by consolidating these plans into a single framework, improving our reporting and our coordination. To date, our climate plan has allowed us to leverage 8.7, or to secure $8.7 million in external funding to help with climate initiatives, and having a good, strong plan going forward would also allow us to apply for additional funding. And also, just a few risks of not proceeding, it leaves us in a position where we have a bit of a patchwork implementation around climate and can lead to reactive decision-making or some sort of short-term responsive instead of a coordinated, long-term approach. And hopefully, this is an investment that ensures a proactive, or is an investment that ensures a proactive, cost-effective approach to climate action that maximizes funding opportunities and long-term savings.
I have a question from Counselor Creelman.
I'm just curious as to the rationale for the Rain Barrel Subsidy Program. Why is this not a local municipal initiative? Why is the county involved in this?
Probably a good question. Anybody know the answer?
I can add a little bit. I know that the town of Orangeville does have this program, but none of the other lower tiers do.
Well, at the risk of being controversial, I'm with Philip on this. I think it is a local municipal initiative, frankly, inasmuch as it diverts rainwater from such things as sewage treatment plants and so forth. I'm in favor of taking it out.
James?
So I would actually support the two comments that were made on the Rain Barrel Subsidy Program, but my question, just for clarification, the $50,000 for the Climate Master Plan, is that the amount that would hit the tax levy? I think this council identified through the strategic plan work that we did that climate is, addressing climate is a priority. I think, given current economic circumstances, I really feel like a lot of people are feeling the pinch, and $50,000 isn't a lot in terms of the grand scheme of the budget that we're working with, but we're getting to the point now where every percentage, every half percentage is gonna have real-world implications for people in our communities. I agree, climate's important, but at this point, with all the economic uncertainty, especially with what's going on in the United States, I would strongly urge us to maybe postpone the work on the climate plan until future years.
Amy?
I just wanted to comment as you're speaking, the $50,000 is not actually new. The reason why I had, the total cost is $250, and I'm only putting $200,000 for rate stabilization, because the $50,000 was actually there last year, and it's intended to be there next year. So if you take it out, then technically, I'm gonna have to increase it for whatever project that's gonna be done next year. Does that make sense?
Just to clarify, that, that.
Just to clarify, that that Climate Action Plan, that's that's where we're studying our own facilities and actions and calculating carbon dioxide emissions and adaptation strategies. In other words, our own our own role in doing something about climate action, right? That's that's what that program is. Amy or Sonya, that? Yeah, I think I'm right.
Through you, Warden. Yes, Counselor Nix, you you are correct. I mean, there is a bit of an extension to that in that it also applies to the community measurements around greenhouse gas emissions and and some other community initiatives as well. Instead of having a community-focused plan and an internal plan, this is bringing the whole thing together. But really, one of the biggest things about this plan is it's meant to find ways for us to be more adapted to the really negative impacts that are likely to occur on our infrastructure going forward and things that will cause greater cost in the future. So having a plan and making investments now into adapting our infrastructure or becoming more energy energy efficient is really about making things more affordable going forward.
And I would with respect, Counselor McLean, just like to disagree with your position. I know it's $50,000, but I think we're cutting our nose off to spider face if we don't continue with this work. Like someday, the costs will catch up to us, and then we'll rue the day we took the $50,000 out. So I'm I'm going to suggest that I'm for keeping it in and keeping on with that work.
So I think I see some heads nodding about rain barrels. Are we okay if we bring that out of the budget? Okay, now, I haven't seen the same kind of nodding of heads on the Climate Master Plan. Your wish is here. James is. Wade isn't. I'm just trying to get a sense. Chris, I'll let you speak, and then we'll go back to you, James.
So I think to back to Philip's original question, when I asked Scott Burns about this, it was as Sonya described, and I was fairly confident that there weren't going to be ongoing costs. It's a consolidation, and then beyond that, there would be regular updates, however many years. So I don't know if if the answer you got from staff respectfully really covered that, but I in talking to Scott, I don't I don't know that there was going to be costs for more reports in future years, but I think I agree with Fred on that it should probably go ahead now, and I agree to get rid of the rain barrels.
Counselor White?
I didn't think the rain barrel thing was going to be an issue when I read through all the documents. I really didn't. Thank you, Warden. I I struggle with my comments, what I was going to say tonight, as I did the last meeting, because I couldn't, I can't, I struggle pointing at one thing or another and saying this should go or that should stay or whatever. So my comment, overarching comment, is this. We are in uncharted economic times right now at this moment, starting likely Saturday. I mean, the White House confirmed today tariffs are going are going to be placed on some things on Saturday, and apparently, he's mulling whether oil is going to be one of those things or not, so that's not for sure. And then some other tariffs likely in April or something, whatever. Yeah, stop. If you want to put, if you want to talk, put your hand up. Wait to be recognized. That's how this works. So with the dollar potentially coming down into record-low territory, while interest rates creep up and the threat of tariffs forcing everything to go sideways, our biggest economic driver in this county is agriculture, and one of the top five industries that is going to be hurt is agriculture. So we have to be cognizant of that. I'm not generally in favor of slashing, cutting and slashing budgets. I never have been. I've been pretty clear about that. But we are in uncharted territories, and this, in my opinion, while I agree with things like climate change reports and rain barrels and all of these other things, I do. I also believe that this period, when people are struggling, when food bank usage is going up, interest rates are going up, people are having trouble affording basic necessities, I think that this has to be an austerity budget. I really, truly do. I get that people around this table aren't going to have the same opinion, but I think it's our responsibility to be very careful and, you know, pause a lot of things. I'm not saying take out, remove, cancel, kill, I'm saying pause a lot of things until we have better, clearer picture on where the economy is going.
Counselor next.
I hear you, Darren, and you make some good points. Sonya, is it possible, we get the budget approved tonight, let's say, with some of these things in, some of them out, let's say disaster strikes, as Darren is alluding to, we can amend the budget. I mean, a month from now, if all hell is broken loose and and we know we're in trouble, we could have a meeting and amend the budget, could we not?
Through you, Warden. It's really not that easy to amend the budget. Once once the budget's approved and actions start to happen to actually update the tax the tax collection for 2025, it's very hard to roll that back. I mean, so, yes, it's theoretically possible, but, you know, to be frank, the the bulk of the work that would be required to roll back a budget and make those changes would fall on your local finance staff more than it would on our staff here.
And just a final comment, Darren, the governor of the Bank of Canada today, who lowered interest rates, says he anticipates if if worse comes to worse with the United States, that they in fact will lower interest rates again. So I mean, I'm just putting that on the table, because you were talking about interest rates going up. He's talking about them quite likely going down if if Trump does what he says he's going to do.
Any further comments here, Counselor Little?
Thanks. I'm sort of heading down a different path. My concern is around the $11 million rate stabilization reserve. Every year, we seem to have a significant surplus. It's good to have a surplus, but it seems that we have a fairly substantial surplus year after year, and then I look at the dollars in the vacancy savings. Those are quite significant. So I'm wondering if there's, you know, ways, are we overstaffing in some areas? Like, how are we managing without having those those staffing positions filled? Is that something we should be reviewing and looking looking at that further? Or are there other areas where the reserve, the surplus should be reduced each year?
Through you, Warden. With respect to the vacancy savings amount, we're talking about about 2% savings on our staffing. So 2% vacancy at any given time with a workforce of over 400, 450 people really isn't that high. You're always going to have some kind of turnover. There's always going to be a period of vacancy, and we do account for that vacancy savings within the budget for that very reason. We recognize that there will be turnover and that people will retire or that, you know, people come and go. So and with respect to the the surplus and the rate stabilization reserve, I'll let Amy speak a little bit more to that. But really, what ends up happening, and you see it as we go through this budget, is that, yes, there is a surplus. Lots of times, those surpluses are a result of unexpected revenue, as much as they are a result of not spending, having expenses that we predicted. So a lot of that revenue is unpredictable. It's for from provincial or federal funding that we really don't have any notice of when we're doing our budget at the beginning of the year. So what ends up happening is this cycle of, yes, we have a fairly significant surplus, but then we use that surplus to put into the rate stabilization reserve, and then we contribute that rate stabilization reserve in all of these different ways that you see in the budget to mitigate those costs. So it sort of balances itself out. There's a surplus, but then the the surplus goes to the reserve, and then the reserve is used to mitigate the costs of the expenses in the budget. So, yes, you can reduce the rate stabilization reserve, and I think Amy does have a plan to reduce that over time, because it is quite high right now. But it won't have a huge impact in the way that the budget is done now. You could do that for one year and have a big impact, but then you would end up with a much larger increase in the future.
Did you want to respond to that, Amy?
I was going to speak to the surplus a little later. I could speak to it now, or?
No. Let, okay, Counselor Mills and Counselor McLean.
Thanks, Warden. In terms of the the Climate Master Plan and sort of tying into the discussion we just had about rate stabilization, I mean, for the sake of $50,000, I think I'm inclined to say, let's leave it in. I mean, it's something we've committed to. Counselor White, you know, I I understand what you're saying about heading into uncharted territory. Climate threats is something that that we do know, though, and and, you know, unfortunately, I think it tends to be one of those things that easily gets knocked off too often and pushed down the road. And unfortunately, you know, there's going to be a day of reckoning, and I'm afraid that that may come sooner than later. So I think there may be other ways to to find some savings if if that's what we're looking for. The $50,000, though, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, I believe it amounts to about 1/10 of 1%. So I mean, if that's if that's where we're at, then I would far rather draw that $50,000 from the rate stabilization reserve, which we know is awfully healthy, than cut out, you know, cut the heart out from something as important as this. Rain barrels, I'm less committed to.
Counselor McLean?
I would just say that my only concern is that, aside from maybe the rain barrels, there's not going to be an obvious item that that will lend itself to come easily out of our budget. And so we're at 5.16%. Historically, our our budgets have followed inflation, right? So the tax levy has been around in and around inflation, while inflation is now at 1.8%. And we still have COVID-era budgets. People are hurting. There are seniors in our community that are on fixed budgets, and so none of these decisions are going to be popular. None of these decisions are going to be easy in terms of what we strike, strike out of the budget. There's going to be consequences. Some of them, like that were just outlined today about the Climate Action Plan, all of them will have those consequences. But unless we make some of the hard decisions, which is what we're here to do, we're going to stay at 5.16%, and we're going to put that pressure on people. And the only other comment I would have is it's not $50,000. We're we are taking money out of rate stabilization, so the county's still spending money, it's just coming from a different pocket. So those are my comments.
Counselor Gardhouse?
Thank you. I guess on the Climate Master Plan, there's the environmental aspect of it, but there's also the productivity aspect of it. From an economic perspective, the there's incentives that are going to be in here that if it rolls out right, we will we will gain back as a society as a whole way more than $50,000 by encouraging people to do things that are more efficient, which then just in, you know, we're being told that Canada-wide that our productivity is is lower and we're not keeping up as as well as we can, and there's different ways of addressing that. We can do more with the same, or we can do or do the same with less. And this is one of these initiatives that will probably do both of it from an economic aspect as well as the climate perspective. So I'm in favor of leaving it in, and I do hear about the fact that, you know, people are struggling financially, but that I think that we'll, this will benefit us financially as well, and I, like everyone else, the rain barrels can go. Thank you.
So Garrett's?
Suggest, because Counselor White, I think we need to to cut some things. I would propose that we not pave the museum parking lot to offset the cost. Okay, it's up for 150. Amy's shaking her head no, so.
Through you, Chair. Anytime you you cut a project at a capital, it's not cutting the full amount, because the work still needs to be done, and we've been raising funds over years, so it I'd have to go back, like, if it's $150,000 and, you know, it it took 15 years, it's only $10,000.
You can keep going.
So just so I understand, but would it be possible to use that money that's been built up for a capital project, like, take that 150,000 out, spend it up on capital that is would be coming from this year's levy? So it would be more work on your end to to shuffle the numbers around, but the result would be removing 150 from the levy, is that correct? Is that possible?
I mean, you can remove as much as you like, but it will have a longer-term impact. Yeah.
Counselor Creelman, I see you have your hand up.
Well, now that we're on the parking lots, I'd say the same thing about courthouse parking lot. I believe there is money in the budget to to redo the courthouse parking lot, and in my recollection, I think this would be about the third time we've done it in the last 20 years. You know, I don't understand why it wasn't done the right way the first time.
Who wants that one?
I guess I can take that. The the parking lot gets replaced, I think, every 15 to 20, 25 years. There's the South Parking Lot and the North Parking Lot. I know in the last 20 years, I know that I'm pretty sure we did the North Parking Lot once, and the South Parking Lot, we did some patchwork because there were some issues with it. And the South, they're both due to be, no, we did the South Parking Lot this year. I don't remember, either this year.
And therein lies the problem. I parked in that lot for years, and large sinkholes appeared. There was a lot of work done, and at the time, everyone was told that that is it forever, and here we are again. And are there large sinkholes? Are we losing judges' cars into them? I'd say that this is not necessary to do that parking lot.
There are current, through you, Warden, there are currently two parts for the parking lot in the budget, and one is for the South Parking Lot, which is one of the properties that's being contemplated for housing development. So certainly, it would make sense to delay that project at this point in time. It was actually in the budget last year and the year before. So this would be the third year that it's being delayed, and it does make sense because of the the potential development of that property for that one to be delayed again. As for the North Parking Lot, I do believe that it is required to be resurfaced or redone. Whether it could be delayed another year, I'm not sure, but we do have an obligation to the Ministry of Attorney General through our lease to keep that parking lot in good order. So delaying it another year might not impact that, but it will have to be done in this at some point in the next couple of years, if it's not done this year.
So I think it's the other way around. The Southern Parking Lot is the one adjacent to the courthouse. The Northern Parking Lot is across the street, and I would suggest that we we take it out of the budget, both out of the budget, frankly, and people drive over there and see whether or not they think it needs to be repaved or not. I don't think it needs to be repaved for the third time in in 15 years.
Through you, Chair. I just wanted to comment that we do have a building condition assessment that we have done every five years, which does tell which does tell us when stuff should be replaced based on the condition. I could, I don't, I don't have it in front of me, but I could probably go back to the to the BCA for that building, which will probably will likely say that it needs to be repaired. We we replace all of our assets based on the BCA, but we do look at the BCA and say, okay, does this make sense, yes or no? Yes, it does need to be replaced, or no, it doesn't, or it can wait a few years. We don't 100% rely on the BCA, but we do use it as a guideline.
If I can make one final comment, this whole life cycle theory that we have a BCA or whatever drives me crazy. I think we need to assess things as to whether they need to be replaced or not. And, you know, the fact that it says it's year 15, and therefore, we need to replace it, let's look at it, you know, let's assess it. And again, I invite anyone to drive over and see whether there is a large enough pothole in that parking lot to swallow up a car. There isn't.
Maybe we just need a truckload of coal. Maybe we just need a truckload of cold patch.
You don't even need that. It's in perfect condition from my last time there.
Through you, Warden. I just want to clarify that, yes, we have BCAs and we have plans. And we still do look at every single project. We don't just take out a guide and say this is when things need to be replaced. There are regular inspections of all of our infrastructure, and when a project is put in the budget, it is based on an actual physical assessment of that project. And the project, that parking lot, I'm sorry, Counselor Kreaman, but it hasn't been replaced in 15 years, three times in 15 years. There were issues when the work was last done by the Ministry of Attorney General, and unfortunately, we still need to do that work now. And whether it's this year or it's delayed, the longer we delay it, the more it will cost in the future because it just becomes a bigger and bigger problem.
I invite my colleagues to look at it.
Counselor Mills, one final word?
So, yeah, just one general comment. I mean, in terms of delaying projects and, you know, delaying anything, I would just sort of remind everybody to take a look at next year's forecast. I mean, it's worse than this year. So pushing things down the road is really not going to prove all that helpful. I understand that there's some uncertainty, you know, in the next coming months, but are we going to be in any better position next January? So I'm not sure if kicking the can down the road any further is going to be much help for the same group of folks that are going to be sitting here next year.
I'm going to ask Amy to carry on here, if she can.
Yep, thank you. I'll move on to the next slide. Moving to Health and Human Services, we have the Food for, actually, yeah, the Food for Thought grants, we've increased by $28,000. HCIA, actually, this is General Government Services, sorry. HCIA Grant Administration increased by 75, an additional 75,000, or 7,500 next year. The Community Grants, $45,000. The Resiliency Hub, the amount is $100,000. We're proposing, we are hoping to get a grant for half of that, and we're pulling 25,000 from rate stabilization because it is new. We did start raising funds for this last year, so that's where the 12,500 came from. The Telephone System Review is 20,000 this year, 30,000 next year, and then we're done. Tabletop Exercise for Cyber Security of 17,000, and then some Health and Wellness and Events in Health and Safety. Any questions with these?
Counselor Rynch.
So I am not a fan at all of the Resiliency Hub. I know I asked last year. I've described it as a glorified gazebo. I know staff would disagree. But again, there's, and I keep getting frustrated with saying, well, we're only this much from the levy and the rest of it from the rate stabilization reserve. I mean, the rate stabilization reserve was the levy. So if we don't apply it to a specific project, we could apply it to lowering the levy this year. So I don't know if somebody wants to provide another explanation about the Resiliency Hub, but that's one I can certainly without.
Any other thoughts on that item?
Okay, carrying on. We have some museum events at the museum, Natural Asset Management, which is to clean up our trees and stuff. The museum also has some additional revenue through renting space. We have the Community Investment Plan of $80,000, which is coming from rate stabilization. And the Investment Attraction Program of 25,000, and I just wanted to include a couple additional points because that did come up in our last meeting. The intention is to develop an interactive, external-facing vacant land directory, enhance Investor's Guide print version, and create digital version with up-to-date statistics on workforce industry and available lands, and attend investment attraction events in conferences to promote Dufferin County as a prime destination located just outside the GTA with access to major highways and a large catchment of talented workforce. Any questions or comments on this slide?
Counselor Garrett.
Yeah, we talked at the last meeting about increasing that rate to 80 for the investment attraction.
We did talk, but there wasn't consensus, so I didn't include it.
I would like to, I would like to increase that to 80. I think we've, we need it. You know, we need a tangible, deliverable from economic development and tourism. I think it's great for all the municipalities. It was, to me, clear at the Board of Trade Breakfast the other morning that, you know, that that's needed, both from the current employers that are looking to attract investors and employees and to help, you know, places like Amaranth, Grand Valley to let people know that you have a commercial industrial area that's developable, as does Amaranth. And I'm sure Mile lengthen probably has some as well. And so to me, that's very important. So I'd like to see that increase to 80.
Counselor Mills and Counselor Taylor.
Thanks, Warden. I, too, would support an increase in that. I think, you know, if investment attraction is something we're going to get serious about, then I think we have to be prepared to give our staff the resources they need to actually do it. And 25,000, you know, quite frankly, isn't going to get us much of anything. So if we're serious about this, let's arm staff with what, you know, what they need. I think over the course of the last year, our staff has proven, you know, their abilities and their talents in this area with few resources. So let's amp this up and let's arm them with something that they can actually use to do some good work. And I would agree with Counselor Garrett's in terms of the sentiments that were expressed at the Board of Trade Breakfast. You know, and when it comes to investment attraction, I do think there is a genuine feeling developing that, you know, a win anywhere in Dufferin County when it comes to investment attraction is a win for all of us. And, you know, it's high time that we've all started to realize that, and I'm glad to see we're finally there.
Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Warden. I was planning on being as quiet as possible tonight, but I wanted to just weigh in on this. Like everybody, I want to watch the burst strings as we do this. However, Counselor Garrett is absolutely right. In all honesty, to spend 25,000 on this is a complete waste of money. So, and why it's a waste of money, it's just not enough. And Raj, the way she answered this question when we were going through it was so professional and kind to all of us. But what she's saying is she's pulling rabbits out of a hat. So either you go to zero, and we just say we're not going to do it, because 25 grand, you're chucking it away. It has to be more and more fruitful, and I can tell you that 80 probably isn't the amount either. But let's make some sort of baby step here and actually do something. So I'm absolutely in favor of this, and thank you very much, Counselor Garrett, for bringing this forward. I think that makes sense.
I think you're hearing the message. Amy?
Yes, thank you. Okay, moving on. The Natural Asset Management within housing, we added $40,000 for that. Additional support, additional money to HCIA for community supports, that's 33,000. And then that would go up to 75,000 in 2026. DCE Moves, additional $20,000. The Housing Strategy, we did, it includes 134,810 for the project lead position, 50,000 for consulting, and the $500,000 transfer to reserve. We've already proposed that the 134 for the new position be funded from rate stabilization. And I want to know that 2026 includes that position as well as a million-dollar transfer to reserve, similar to the 500,000 in 2024. And as you, in the report, I did say that that was, you know, it's your ability to show that you're committed to doing something and setting money aside. It's up to you what you do with it. The Older Adult Strategy, the Supervisor, will also support community support services. We are, it's 140,070. Because it's new, we're applying rate stabilization at $85,000 for the net of 55, and then the full amount in 2026. Programming costs do include a part-time driver for a total of 50, almost 53,000. Net of revenue gets us the 38, and then we have the 10,000 for the marketing plan.
Counselor Post.
Thank you very much. Amy, in your report, too, you do talk about the idea that council could utilize this year's surplus for, instead of, instead of the tax levy to apply that $500,000, and I think that's a great idea. Do you have any idea yet what that surplus is going to really look like? I know you gave some kind of preliminary numbers there, but...
Give me two slides.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
I think the best is yet to come. Okay. Any other questions here? Oh, Counselor Taylor.
Thank you again, Warden. Just the housing strategy piece, like, we're looking at big buckets, and that's what we should be doing, is saying, what are the biggest costs, and can we or can we not go forward with these things? To me, that's exactly what all of us are going to hang our hats on when we say goodbye to each other in a year and a bit. So we absolutely need to do that. So my question is, I guess, to you, Sonya. Like, I think even though this is sort of a drop in the bucket, like, it's a pebble in the ocean, 500,000 for what we're talking about. It's a start, and my concern is, I get constant questions about this, and what are you guys doing? What are you guys doing? Once we pass this, it would be great if there was something that came out very quickly and described, like, from a communication strategy in a very simplistic way about what we're doing with pretty pictures, and we announce to the county, you know, we're taking this seriously and where we're going. And again, it's a pebble in the ocean, but that's what I think we need to do immediately once we pass this.
Through you, Warden. Thanks for that, Counselor Taylor. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we are expecting an additional update from the consultants who have been working on the implementation piece, and hopefully will very soon have, be able to identify and bring back to council what those sort of top three priorities, properties are. And then from that, really develop a good communications plan, as you've mentioned, including potential partners and sources of funding in order to really move this forward. And although, yes, that's only a drop in the budget, in the bucket, in terms of what we need to get this work done, it is a significant amount, and it will allow us to actually start to advance this work.
Counselor Rynch, did you have a question?
For a comment? Yeah, and I asked this last time. I can't wrap my head around having a full-time position when we're talking about building a long time from now. I got a great answer last time. I just don't agree with it. It's not convincing. So that, I don't care where you fund this position from. I don't think it's necessary this year.
You're talking about the Older Adult Strategy position? Oh, the, sorry.
Part of the housing strategy, part of that 550 grand is an employee, right? I don't know if we call it the project manager or something like that. Project lead, and we were going to take it from rate stabilization. I don't care where you take the money from. Again, you're stealing money that you could use to reduce the levy. And I don't, I got a great answer last time, Sonya. I just, it doesn't convince me. That's all.
So Taylor?
I think those comments are great. Like, it's great to challenge why we're spending money. We should all be doing that here. I sincerely don't see how we would push this forward if we put it at the corner of somebody's desk. Like, it's a complete, it's a terrible, terrible, terrible decision. I talked earlier about the 25 grand. Well, if 25 grand is, it either needs to be 0 or 80, this is the same thing. Like, don't spend the money. Take it right out of the budget if we're not going to have the person, because it won't get done. It won't get done. We need the person, in all respect. And I appreciate the fact that you're challenging the number. I admire you for it. That's exactly what we all need to do, but we'll get nowhere if we don't have a person.
Anyone else? Good food for thought here. Keep going, Amy.
Warden?
Oh, sorry. John, I can't see you on the screen, so you have to maybe speak up when you need to. Go ahead.
Sorry. Can I suggest that this be initially a contract position? And we review it in a year's time as to whether it needs to be full-time or not? And if, you know, in order to get the ball rolling, make it a contract position.
Through you, Warden. It was only ever intended to be a contract position, probably for a year and a half or two years in order to get the project moving. And then the skill set that would be required to advance this project will be very different from the skill set for, from someone who might need to be in place to help manage going forward.
Okay, I'm happy with that.
Carry on.
Thank you. Moving on to paramedics, they have, we have the Paramedic Master Plan of $100,000 being funded up from rate stabilization. We have the addition of the shift in Shelburne, 210,400 to start in October, with 50% coming from subsidies. The additional ambulance of 225, which would be offset by development charges, and then a command vehicle of $80,000. No questions there?
I don't see any. Everybody wants that command vehicle on standby.
So I just wanted to put this same slide up we had last time, where we can talk about how to reduce the levy. We increased revenues, which, as you know, is difficult, decreasing expenses, whether that be postponing projects, changing service levels, reducing the contribution to capital, or apply more reserves. And of course, 1% of the tax levy is $475,000. And everybody's been asking today about the 2024 surplus, so I want to say thank you to my staff because they've been working really hard trying to get everything in so that we can come up with an estimate. We're not quite finished, but our estimates are 2.5 to 3 million dollars for our 2024 surplus. If you recall, last year, we did provide a report that showed how the surplus was actually much higher than the end result because we did not do a bunch of reserve transportation, reserve contributions. The same holds true for 2024. In 2024, we included a million-dollar transfer from the rate stabilization reserve, and I'm not doing that because we do not need that. We do, and I did want to state that we do include the million-dollar transfer from rate stabilization in 2025 as well. The largest contributes to the surplus that I can see at this point is a higher-than-anticipated investment interest. Our vacancy savings were over $1.2 million, whereas the budget was only 750,000, which is another reason why we increased it to a million in 2025. When we have vacancy savings, it also contributes to savings in other areas, as, you know, work may not be getting done. And of course, we've also seen additional subsidies in early years in childcare, as well as Dufferin Oaks. A more detailed report will probably come in March of what makes up the surplus. But at this point, I would say it'll be between 2.5 and 3 million dollars. But just speaking of the surplus in early years in childcare, I know that Brenda has a report coming to committee, I believe, in February with the next Seawalk update. We already have some concerns for 2025 where we're likely to be in a deficit position just because we grew faster than what we had planned to grow. With this in mind, I would like to propose a motion tonight to transfer any 2024 surpluses in the early years in childcare to the Children's Services Reserve Fund so that we can draw from it in 2025 if required. Currently, that's about, I mean, we haven't finalized the numbers in that division, but I'm guessing between 3 and 500,000.
Any discussion on that before we move this as a motion? Moved by White, seconded by Post, that any surplus from the Early Years in Childcare Division be transferred to the Children's Services Reserve Fund? And that, do we have a number, Amy? That just any surplus be allocated towards reserve for future, oops, that's just, that's just the first one. Just the first one. She's got so many motions for me here. Okay, so we've got a mover and a seconder, that that surplus go into the Children's Services Reserve Fund? All those in, sorry, sorry. We can discuss it. Go ahead, Counselor Taylor.
Thank you very much, Warden. It's kind of interesting. There's a bunch of numbers being floated around here now. So we just heard 2.5 to 3 million dollars is the surplus. And then three hundred to five hundred is early childhood. The math on the total increase at five point one six is approximately two and a half million dollars. Correct? So if we have that as a surplus, you could almost get to zero by just using the surplus, which I'm not suggesting. I just want to point out, point out the math. The way that that's worded, it's, for me, it's too loose. It shouldn't speak to all the surplus, because it, it almost reads that you're putting all the surplus, and is the way I would read that. Okay, I just want to make sure that that's the case. We should come back to this as another motion as we go forward about what we would do with the rest of that surplus. And it wouldn't necessarily, in my mind, I'm not, I just want to set as a thought starter, it wouldn't necessarily have to be to offset five point one six percent. There's other benevolent projects that we have here that I would suggest, and I'll just set it up here. Housing could be one that you would take and put aside now. And so, just as thought process, and thank you for the clarification.
Through, through Warden, through you, Warden, Counselor Taylor, you're just two steps ahead of us. We, I'll, I'll leave it to Amy to get to that proposal, but are you there now?
Yeah, I kind, this is kind of my last slide. The next slide I have just kind of summarizes.
Can we just, before we do that, we have a motion on the floor. And that motion reads, just for clarification, that the surplus from the early years in childcare be transferred to the Children's Services Reserve Fund. So that would be the twenty twenty-four surplus. Counselor Nix?
Just to be clear, the surplus from the early child, whatever, was not included in your estimate of two and a half to three million? It, that's, this is a separate surplus. Okay, okay, that's all.
Oh, it is part of, it is part of that. Okay, it is part of it, he said. She said. Counselor McLean?
And just for clarification, that amount for the childcare savings, is that all county money? Or is that provincial and federal funding as well? Is there a mix?
Through you, Chair, it's a mix of provincial and, and county money levy. They did receive a considerable, like, considerable amount of more money this year, which means more admin dollars. So we're able to, we, we just have, we have a surplus.
Okay, so, sorry, just a supplementary. So then, if I'm understanding correctly, at least the provincial part of that surplus could not be allocated to housing or anything else. That has to be applied to childcare. So I just wanted to clarify that. Okay.
So we're protecting that piece of it for childcare. Okay. So everybody gets that? So we've had the mover and the seconder. All those in favor of that motion, it's carried.
Okay, so. These are items that I had come up with before, that we would possibly talk about the investment in track, traction, which we talked about, the welcome signs. We've talked about all of these. And I'm just going to hope that, okay, good. These are the changes that have been proposed tonight. We've had a lot of discussion about the housing strategy and reducing that, taking that out of the budget and funding it from the twenty twenty-four surplus, which I think is the right thing to do. There's a couple of options. You can actually decide to just take five hundred thousand dollars out of that, out of the surplus and put it towards the reserve. You can apply more, or you can say a percentage. It's entirely up to council.
So through, through you, Warden, when, we had spoken about this earlier as staff. One of the suggestions we had come up with, with respect to the housing strategy, was to say that perhaps council might like to consider something like fifty percent of this year's surplus and surpluses for the next, you know, three to four years be contributed to the housing strategy project. It's, it's been identified as a top priority with council. It would address some of what you were speaking to, Counselor Taylor, around wanting to make significant contributions to this project. And this would be a, a really healthy way, I think, to do that, and would get us even further ahead. So if the remaining surplus after that transfer from childcare is, say, around two point one million, fifty percent of that would be over a million dollars going into that housing reserve right now, at the end of twenty twenty-four.
Counselor Post?
I would happily make that motion.
Okay. Moved by Post, seconded by Wade, and we have a question from Counselor Nix.
Yeah, you, you gotta go slow with me, okay?
Okay, yep.
So we're down to about an estimated two point one million surplus or something. And there's going to be a motion on the floor to take half of that and put it in the housing strategy. That means in the budget, we're taking out five hundred thousand. That, so, right there, that's, that's approximately a one percent reduction in the tax levy for this year. So we're down to about four point one six. Oh, oh.
One seven. You were really close.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm all in favor.
Counselor Post?
I just want to be clear with the motion, too, that I would like to, to have it, say, for the next five years. With that motion as well, fifty percent of the surpluses for the next five years to go into the housing reserve.
So do you need that as one motion or two? Two motions? Okay. So one, the first motion says that, oh, what was it, five hundred and some? Fifty percent of this year's surplus. You want fifty percent on this one? Okay. Fifty percent from the twenty twenty-four surplus be allocated towards a reserve for the future housing strategy initiatives. That's the first motion. Okay, and it's been moved and seconded. Okay, we ready to vote on this one? All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that one's carried. Okay, then Lisa, the second one would be that. Oops. Sorry, John, I see you have your hand up.
Well, I don't, I don't know if this is an amendment or, or an observation, but I think we can do without paving the parking lots at the courthouse. Certainly, the north parking lot, because we may have other plans for it. And I would say that the southern parking lot does not need to be rebuilt.
So where are we going to put that one?
It's a reduction, I would assume.
Not, we're not on that.
We're not, maybe we're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
I just wanted to jump in, because I didn't see it in Amy's list.
Okay. Probably because it's capital, right? So Amy, the second one then, the second motion proposed by Lisa, that would it be fifty percent, is this what you thought? Fifty percent of future surpluses be allocated towards reserves for future housing strategies for the next four, five years? Five years? Okay. So that's a move by Post, seconded by McLean, or is that a question? Okay, seconded by McLean. And then we have a question from Nix.
I'm, I'm all for the housing strategy. I'm just worried about tying the hands of future councils. I mean, it may or may not be a good idea. If it is a good idea, future councils could make that decision every year. I, I, well, I'll, I'll, I'll put that.
Just, Lisa, just a, a second. Counsel Garrett, so you had a motion, a point?
It's, it's pretty much the same thing. I'd happy to support that on a yearly basis. I've just, we've talked a lot about uncertain times. I would feel more comfortable doing it that way.
To the end of term, is that what you're saying?
I would be fine if it comes up every year for the next five years or longer. I just would be more comfortable, I, I agree with, you know, the, going beyond the term, but I still think until there's global.
Certainty?
Certainty, maybe, yeah.
It may not happen for four years. Okay.
I would hold my breath on global certainty for a while. But I think really, it's in principle anyways. I think future councils could always revisit it at any time and remove it. But I think it's important, as the top item that this council has identified, is implementation of affordable housing. I think it's important that we put forward our interest in trying to find a way to fund it, because it's great that we're doing a strategy, but if we're not going to put the money aside to implement it, the strategy isn't worth the paper it's printed on. So I think this is a way, in principle, to ensure that we've got a funding source identified on how we can move the strategy forward in an effective way. So I'm happy to add the words "in principle," if that makes it easier for it to come back to future councils. But I do think it's important that this council really take a stand on how we're going to fund it.
So if we say "in principle," does that give Amy enough direction? It's okay?
I'll withdraw my earlier comment then, because as Lisa said, future councils could rescind that motion.
Okay. So do we need the "in principle" then? Or do you want to leave the five-year in?
It can stay in. It can stay in "in principle." That's fine.
Okay. Philip, did you have a, a comment?
Yeah, I, I'm fine with taking the money from the surplus. I, I don't see how that shows us having any bigger, what's the word, intention of doing it, because all we did was move money around. We had five hundred thousand dollars in. Now we've just taken, so we're at the same point. We had five hundred thousand dollars to put into a housing reserve in the budget. We just took it out, and now we're taking money from the surplus. We're not, we're not any farther ahead. In twenty twenty-six, I believe it's a million plus that Amy had. So again, if we do have a surplus, it's about a million plus. We're going to be in the exact same spot. We're just moving money around. We're not actually showing that we're, that we're committed to it. We're just trying to find it from a different place. So I'm fine if you want to do it this way, but let's just be clear, we're not actually going to be any farther ahead.
We are designating, though, where we want that surplus to go.
And Phil, it does lower the tax levy by about one percent.
So I think those are two different points, though, right? Are we, are we more concerned about lowering the tax levy, or are we showing that we're committed? Because if the money's going to be the same in that housing reserve, then we're not, then we're not doing anything other than lowering the levy. I'm, I'm okay with that. But let's just be clear on what we're doing, not tooting our horns.
Counselor Wade?
So to be clear on that, there was five hundred thousand dollars in the budget going to reserve. We removed that. We're going to use that to reduce the tax levy. We just made a motion to put fifty percent of the surplus, which is estimated at two and a half million dollars, into that same reserve. So in effect, we took out five hundred thousand and put one point two five million in. So we did just make a substantial change, and it's an upward change.
My fault. So I say incorrect, for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six? And, and it's less, right? Because we, it's actually two, we took some of the, some of the surplus out already, right?
We have.
I mean, it, it, I, I was wrong. It is more for twenty twenty-five. It's the same for twenty twenty-six.
I'm going to let Amy respond.
The twenty twenty-six budget is really a plan. So if this is the plan of council to take surplus and apply it into that reserve, then we could certainly reduce that one million dollars or eliminate it in twenty twenty-six.
Providing we have a surplus. Counselor Garretts?
So we, on this motion here, we're committing fifty percent of the surplus. But if the, if we don't have a surplus, we have the option of committing tax dollars to, to this program, which I think we certainly will, because I think we are committed to moving forward with it. So next year, if there's a, a two million dollar surplus, and we put a million towards this, we may top it up with additional dollars if we feel necessary. Thank you.
Anyone else final? Now, did we have a mover? We had Lisa moving it. Did we have a seconder? James on this one. Okay. So can we just make sure we've got the wording right, Madam Clerk? Can you repeat that motion?
That fifty percent of the future surpluses be allocated to a reserve for future housing strategy initiatives in principle.
Everybody clear? We got the four or five years in there? Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion's carried. Congratulations, folks. I think that's a pretty good one. Okay, is that it, Amy? That's it. So now we have, are you saying that then this is what our, our increase would be in the levy? Sorry, Counselor Mills?
Thanks, Warden. And, and I, I hate to circle back, but, you know, seeing some of the progress we made there in, in terms of lowering the levy, I, I do want to just come back to the, the investment attraction item for a second. There had been a bit of discussion amongst a couple of us before the meeting about, you know, a possible increase to a hundred thousand. And, and in some discussions with Raj, I, I think there's, there's going to be a particular focus this year, if, if the resources are there on our ag sector. And, you know, in line with some of the comments made earlier, that, you know, some, some of the, the problems that we're potentially going to see over the coming months could affect our ag sector harder than, than others. You know, now that we're in a better position, I, I do think that, that extra infusion, you know, although in the grand scheme of things, not an awful lot of money could help our team maybe, you know, provide some, some further assistance to our, our ag community. So bottom line, I'd like to move that up further to a hundred.
Oh, we thought we were done. Okay, so that would be an addition from eighty-five to a hundred? Is that what you're saying, Counselor Mills? Eighty to a hundred. Okay.
If you re, if, if you need a motion, and Wade's moving that, I would second.
So move by, you don't need a motion? You're, you're going to just give direction to the treasurer then? Okay. Counselor Taylor?
Just have some thoughts from the rest of the meeting as well, and I wanted to kind of get it off my chest. And that is, like, first off, I think it's important that we're looking at this year, for sure. But you should also be looking at these things from a holistic standpoint, and what do, what do they mean going forward? And just to throw some things out, if it truly is, as everybody's saying, Armageddon, right? Who knows? Admittedly, these things don't necessarily cost this year, because I was listening, Amy. They are funded by borrowed money that we may or may not use, depending upon we use it. But if you really wanted to get at things, the Southern Operations Center, when we have to start to carry the debt. And I, I listened to Scott when he was doing his presentations. I'm not suggesting that we don't need it. But if you really wanted to do something, delaying that or pushing off for a period of time, although when you look at what the cost was, it used to be X, now it's Y, so we hear ourselves. So, but I do just want to bring that up. And then the other one that screams at me in the budget, and certainly no offense, Rohan, I don't mean to circle you out. It's just, it's your role. But I look at HR and the size of that grouping, and I see what we're doing in terms of adding more bodies to that in future years. And I would just suggest it's starting to look very big, and it's something that we should look at in future years. And I'd like to discuss that as we go forward about what the vision should be, and we should do that before the next budget. And I know it's not in this budget. I just think it's something that, that we should, we should talk about. But I'll, I'll leave the Southern Operations thing hanging there for everybody else to kind of weigh off. And then just a couple of other things before I give up the microphone. You know, there was, there were some great comments by you, Counselor McLean, about, you know, we should stick with the rate of inflation. And, you know, we're all politicians, so on, salt us all as we sit here. But the, the, the truth is, is we don't do that, right? So when we hit the height of the pandemic, as the amateur economist in the room, we hit seven point nine percent inflation. We didn't put through a budget of seven point nine. And what that means is we get behind, right? So now we're behind. And so we shouldn't necessarily stick to that. I'm with you. It'd be great if we were less than the rate of inflation. But the reality is, what's happened and what's happening, we're behind. We're behind where we should be. We're behind on our capital projects. So I don't, I think we should be easier on ourselves on that, on that inflation line. And then the last one is that surplus versus deficit. And we all want to say, what, you know, my gosh, Amy, why did you get us in the spot where we've got such a large surplus? Why can't you budget more? It's so hard to land this thing on a dime. There's no way we would land it on a dime. If anything, we're lucky that it's not the other side of the coin, and that is that we were short. So I think the very fact that we are where we are is actually, it's a blessing, and we probably should be thankful as opposed to worrying about that. And then my last piece would be, if we truly are at four point two one now, it's changed since I saw it, would it be fun, would it be fun, everybody, a budget meeting that's fun, to look at? Would we just round it down so we all feel good about things? And, and we're already playing around with that surplus amount. So the math would be about fifty or sixty grand, I guess, and we could get down to three point nine nine.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor, Counselor Garretts, and then Counselor McLean.
Oh, I wasn't going to bring it up, but Counselor Taylor.
Oh, I wasn't going to bring it up, but Counselor Taylor did. So from 2014 to 2024, the difference in Dufferin County's tax rate's 1.2%. So Dufferin, and it, so we, we haven't, the rate of inflation over that period of time is 30.49 in Ontario, so we really haven't gotten anywhere close. So I was right with you there until you, till you veered off to 3.99. For that reason, I think we should stay with, with the 4.21. Thanks.
Counselor McLean and then Counselor Creelman.
Just two questions for clarification. So on the Southern Operations Center, I know that there's going to be debt financing of about 20 million, I believe. Is that correct? Okay. Will there be any spending? Because you made a really great point at the, at the top of the meeting that there's still a lot of decisions that need to be made. There's reports that need to come in for greater clarification. Will those reports come in before any spending is made on those?
Through you, Chair. So we've already committed to spending like on design and stuff, I believe. So those costs are already occurring, but in terms of next steps, there should be a report coming.
Through you, Warden. And the, the money that's currently being spent isn't even really on design. It's on site location and a more general idea of what's on requirements, not site specific, actual drawing design. So there has been an investment made so far to do some of that site selection work. And there will be a report coming to council very soon on that. And then that will be a decision point for council to decide how you want to move forward.
Okay. So, so if I'm hearing you correctly, you're, you're spending a little bit of money just to do some background work. So you have the information to bring to council to make a decision. Is that correct? Okay. So my second question then is, what is the plan for the other half of the surplus? Like I know that's for us to decide, but you must have some ideas coming into this meeting of what you were planning to do with it.
So typically at the end of the year, I do look at areas where we could take the funds and apply it to specific reserves or whatever to build up. I haven't had an opportunity to do that yet. Our policy is that any surpluses go into the rate stabilization reserve, except for the one that we've just passed where the surplus is going to go to the housing strategy. I recognize that that rate stabilization reserve has been growing quite a bit and that we do need to make some decisions on how we can spend it. My plan for this year is to take a closer look at all of our reserves. We need to do some background work on our side as well to figure out where we want to spend and then bring that back to council for discussion.
Counselor Creelman and then Counselor White.
A couple of things. Number one, our inputs on inflation are very different than the inputs on inflation generally, whether it be on the Ontario rate or the Canadian rate. And, and we're influenced by different factors than a typical household. So I leave it at that. One thing I'd say in, in, in terms of going forward, especially towards next year's budget, I think we need to have a summit between now and then on the whole issue of tourism and economic development promotion. Because we have various competing factors there. We have the town of Orangeville, we have DeBott, we have other local tier municipalities, and we're all trying to do the same thing. And I'm not certain that we're doing it as efficiently as we could. And I think a summit would bring us all together. We could discuss who's responsible for what. There's a role for everybody, but right now I think there's a duplication of effort and expenditure.
Thank you, Counselor White.
Thanks. I've, I've got some comments on that, but I'll say them at another time. I don't want to sound negative or whatever, judge for yourself. But if you look at what we've done tonight, we've collectively done zero things tonight. We've actually added to the budget, not taken away. The only person who's actually done some work to lower the number, the tax number is Amy. Thank you, Amy, by her recommendations. And we're, we're sitting here with a one point, estimated 1.2, let's say, million dollar surplus left to, left to allocate. Amy's already said the rate stabilization fund is a little bit high. I, I don't, I don't like the 4.21. I don't really like the 3.99 either, given where we are. I'd like 2.99 better. So I'd like to see us take at least 1% of that, 1% worth of that surplus before it's allocated elsewhere and applied directly to the tax levy.
Anyone else? Counselor Garretts?
Just on the comment about the only one that's doing it, Amy has done a lot of work. And I know that she has this week because I've sent her a lot of emails. So, and I know I'm not the only one. So I appreciate how it looks, but, and I don't usually get too defensive, but I've spent a lot of time going through line by line. So I just wanted to point that out. And I know I'm not the only one that said Amy questions, and I, but I still want to say a 4.21. So thanks.
Anyone else? Counselor Rent, oh, Counselor Garretts?
No, that's okay. It doesn't matter which one of us. I would just like to point out about the surplus and that it's a two, two and a half to $3 million. But that's only 0.15%, or 0.22% of our total budget of $160 million. So I think that to being that close is to be commended. That's a remarkably well-done job, to be quite honest.
Counselor Rentsch then, Counselor Creelman.
So in general, I think this is a pretty good budget. I think it's the most collaborative budget we've had since I've been here. And I think staff really should be commended for, for how they've done. They've tried to listen to us and even though we contradict ourselves most of the time. But they've also tried to follow the strategic plan and I think they've hit a pretty good balance. So I don't mind, I don't mind where we're at. I, I think we could and we should do better. And I realize if we do, that means we don't follow through on some of the things we said we'd would. And I'm okay with that because the only thing I really care about, I've said this a few times, is housing. I still think we're not doing enough there. We are doing more than we could. I, I'm not going to support this budget mainly because the things we're doing this year are going to have massive impacts down the road and we haven't talked about that yet. And we know what's coming. And we also know that there's a couple of things that the wage market review is going to have a heck of an impact. And I asked Amy and I, I think, I said, there is, we don't know what that number is, so it's not in the budget yet, but it's coming. So I really think we need to pick something big and say, you know what, it's great, but we can't do it because down the road, we're not going to be able to afford it.
And we all know what happened when the OPP wage thing came through for all of us. We saw that. Anyone else, anything to say? Oh, sorry, John.
Well, it's not big, but I don't think I had a definitive response to my suggestion about the parking lots.
So Taylor?
It's in, it's in the same category as rain barrels, but I think it's important.
If I may, and with all due respect to Counselor Creelman, I, I don't know why we do that at this table. Like again, if you think about what we're supposed to do, we're supposed to be the oversight body. And, you know, again, with all respect to Counselor Creelman, you know, I think highly of you. But to say that, you know, Todd Taylor should go over and look at the parking lot and make a judge on whether or not we should do it or not, it's the most ridiculous thing in the world. Like I, I have no business and I, I've gotten to know a bunch of you in here. And I can't imagine, other than perhaps yourself, Darren, why we would go over and look at the parking lot. If staff have said that this thing needs to be done, and the very fact that, you know, we're talking about reserves in a way, about getting it in certain buckets and looking after projects on a year-to-year basis so that those reserves are set up and we could actually do it and not be having an imposition, like this is brilliance, right? This is, this is what municipal governments should be doing. I don't think that we're, I don't think we're doing the right thing by telling staff that we're going to go over and check on the parking lot. So again, Counselor Creelman, you know, I, I think highly of you, but this is misguided at best. Like, let's move on.
Madam Warden, if I can respond, I know county roads that have had less attention than the parking lot at the courthouse. And I raise it in the same vein as Counselor Philip raised the issue of the rain barrels. I, I just think it's absurd and, you know, I'm, I'm just sticking to my position.
We've heard your position, Counselor Creelman, and I'm sure staff will have a response to you at some point. So are you making a motion about the parking lots?
No, I'm simply going on record. I'm not certain I could get a second or.
Counselor Nix?
Could I suggest, I mean, I simply don't know enough about the subject to, to even begin to talk about it. But if Scott Burns were here, I'd ask him, and I sit on his committee. My suggestion would be let's go with the budget that we've got and the money's in there. And you know what? At our first meeting, you're the, you're the chair, right, James? Let's ask him and get his, who's, who's the chair?
Todd.
Oh, Todd is. Let's ask Scott, get a professional opinion about this parking lot.
I think the professional opinion is already in the budget.
Well, okay, but if Scott confirms that, then we go ahead and do the payment. If he says, well, you know, I could delay it for a year, you don't have to spend the money this year.
Through you, Warden. Scott has confirmed it to me and his, his response in, to this dialogue has been that it will just cost more if we don't do it out. It'll cost more later.
Then I'm sorry, John. I, I trust Scott's opinion over yours on, on this issue. I'm sorry.
It always costs more, but as I said, there are county roads, including one in Mono, that has received less attention than the parking lot, the south parking lot of the courthouse in the last 20, 25 years.
Thank you, John. Noted. Okay, are we as a council ready to pass this budget? Okay. Move by Nick, seconded by. Counselor White, did you have a comment you wanted to say? You're not ready? Is there anything else?
We haven't formally made a decision, I don't think, on what we're going to do with the other half of the surplus, have we?
So through, through you, Warden, the common practice is that it gets transferred into the rate stabilization reserve and then is used in the subsequent budget. So when you see all of these items that Amy says coming from the rate transfer, the rate stabilization reserves, that is using the previous year's surplus. So it does get used in the budget. It just doesn't get used in this budget. So we're using it sort of retroactively.
No, I completely understand. I just, I know that there's been some comments about using it to further reduce the tax levy or also put it back into reserve. So I was just hoping that maybe we could have a resolution on where that money's going to go.
Counselor Taylor?
I applaud you for bringing it up. Thank you for not letting us get through this. If the rate stabilization fund already has a whole bunch of money in it and we still have extra money left over in the surplus, those two things don't match, right? If we've already said that we, as a team, are focused on housing, why don't we just give direction now and take the remainder of it as well and put it into housing? And I would make that motion that we would do that.
That's what you're saying? You want the rest of the surplus applied to the housing?
Yeah, that's part of that. I like to make that motion as opposed to leaving it loose like that. And I'd hate, you know, I don't want to give the money back over to the rate stabilization fund that already has lots in it. Why would we do that? So I'd rather see it, I'd rather see it implemented. And again, we know it's a priority. We've all agreed it's a priority. And I think that we should take that money and put it into housing.
Okay, Counselor Nix, then Counselor Post.
The effect of that motion, Todd, would be that, because we've already passed a motion to put half the surplus in. Your motion would put, so we'd be putting all of the surplus into housing.
So that's this one. We'd have to change that. Or just make a new, new motion. Okay. Talk about that for a minute, folks. Just think about that.
I'd be happy to second it.
Okay, so if Todd makes that motion, that all of, all of the surplus would be directed to the housing?
All of the surplus minus the childcare portion.
Well, yes, that one has already been defined. So just think about that. Are you ready to talk about it a little further? Okay, so Taylor then McLean?
Why don't we take a break?
Yeah, okay. Why don't we do that? Let's take a five-minute break and everybody just mull that one over. And if, if that's not what you want, then I want to hear about it when you come back. Okay? Thank you, Madam Clerk. If we can recess for five. Thank you. You begin the filming again? Okay, we've had some good discussion over our sugar break. I'm going to turn this back to Amy for a bit of an explanation, please.
Through you, Chair. Just in regards to taking the entire surplus and moving it into the Reserve for Housing Strategy, I'm a little hesitant at this point, simply because we haven't finalized our year-end. So my suggestion is we leave the policy as is. I will be doing a year-end report in March. And at that point, then we can suggest that any balance get moved to the new housing strategy reserve.
Everybody understand that? Philip.
I'm actually, I'm quite in favor of just saying 100% of the surplus goes to housing reserve, mainly because another frustrating part that I see is, or for me anyways, is that quite often we just use the rate stabilization reserve to fund projects that come up over the course of the year. And granted, we can't think of everything at budget time, but I think this way, by saying nope, it's going to go to housing, we'll have to be more conservative when it comes to spending. So I, I understand where Amy's coming from and if we want to wait till then, but I'd be happy to, to make that commitment tonight.
Counsel Post.
As the seconder to the motion, I'd be happy if we changed the phrasing of it to, to include that following a reserve strategy review, that pending that, the remaining appropriate amount would go into the housing strategy implementation.
So can we just, what's the last motion we have on the floor here, Madam Clerk?
So through you, Warden, the motion on the floor right now is that all the, the remaining surplus be moved into the housing, sorry, be allocated towards the Reserve for Housing and the Strategy Initiative reserves.
So Counsel Post, you're saying, following a report from the Treasury or?
I think it's, I think it's just important to keep the sentiment there, that what we want is the maximum amount of surplus dollars being allocated there rather than moving into rate stabilization. I think that's the clear part. So however it has to word, however the motion has to be worded to give that, but still allow the Treasury team the time to go through and make sure that any of the other reserves other than rate stabilization are healthy and that they're in a good position. I think that that's the, kind of the intent that we want to get to.
Okay, so we had, Lisa's a mover. Who did we have as seconder? Oh, Todd was, Todd moved, Lisa seconded that motion.
I'm fine with the amended motion. Thank you.
We've got that, Madam Clerk. Counsel Nix.
Wouldn't it be simpler just to put the motion on the floor and defeat it? And then Amy would be making her report in March and we could make the decision in March. We just defeat the motion.
Or withdraw it.
Or withdraw it. Rather than fool around with all this wording, which I don't quite understand, just either withdraw the motion or defeat it.
What's your pleasure?
I think it gives direction. I don't think we need to drop it. I think it's pretty clear and I think it's fine the way it is.
Okay, so the motion will not be withdrawn and we will vote on the motion. And Madam Clerk, can you just read it one more time?
Following a reserve strategy review, the remaining surplus for 2024 be allocated towards a reserve for future housing strategic initiatives.
Sure. Through you, Madam Ward, if, we may just need to make another small adjustment to that. I don't think we need to wait for the full reserve strategy review. It'll just be following the year-end, completion of the year-end process and a year-end report from staff.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Two, two opposed. And Sean, we're not sure. Okay, looks like it was three. Okay, motion's carried. So, given that, are we ready to move the budget? Is there anyone ready?
Madam Ward, I was in favor of that motion. Sorry, I was short.
Okay.
I was, I put my hand up.
Got it. Thanks. Counsel White.
Thanks. Just to complicate things further, I'd be happy to put a motion on the floor that we withdraw 1% of the tax levy from Tax Rate Stabilization Fund to lower the tax rate levy.
So it's clear. So we've got 4.2 at the moment and you're proposing to?
Withdraw 1%, whatever 1% is, whatever dollar value 1% is, from the Tax Rate Stabilization Fund to lower the tax levy.
So that's a move by White, seconded by McLean. Comments, questions? Counsel Guardhouse.
At this point in time, because Amy has implied that she wants to do a tax rate stabilization review and where we're at, when we're looking at the projected budgets for 2026 and 2027, which are 10 and 8%, so that we may need to be using that fund. I realize it's a fairly substantial, but I think the need for that in the future is going to be even greater than it is today. And if we think that things are unstable today and years from time, or a year from now, this may look extremely stable. Who knows? It's a, it's a real unknown, so. So I won't be supporting it at this point in time. Thank you.
Counsel Post.
I agree with Counselor Guardhouse. I fully support your, your thoughts, Counselor White, but I think it's the wrong time to do that until we've done a full reserve strategy. And I am concerned about future year budgets and especially some of the large capital projects that are coming, that I think rate stabilization is appropriate to help fund at that point.
Counsel Mills.
Could, could you remind us what, what is the rate stabilization reserve fund at right now, roughly? 11? Okay, I thought that's what you said, but I.
Anyone else? Okay, so are we ready to pass the budget or not? Oh, sorry, sorry. Vote on the motion then. And Madam Clerk, can you read the motion? Moved by White.
Seconded by Counsel McLean. That 1% be withdrawn from the tax rate stabilization to lower the tax levy for 2025.
Okay. All those in favor of the, oh, sorry.
All right, recorded vote, please.
Phil has asked for a recorded vote.
Counsel Wrench.
No.
Counsel Solomon.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
With respect, no.
Counsel White.
With respect, yes.
Counsel Krieman.
No, with respect.
Counsel Guardhouse.
No, with respect.
Counsel Garretts.
No.
Counsel Hall is absent. Counsel Hawkins?
Yes.
Counsel, sorry, Warden Horner?
No, with respect.
Counsel Little.
No, respectfully.
Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Mills.
Yes.
Counsel Nix.
No.
And Counsel Post.
No.
So that loses 26 to 6.
Our, now is it, is counsel ready to pass the budget then, as it said, as it stands? Okay, moved by Post, seconded by Nix. And any discussion? Counsel Taylor.
If I may, and this is perhaps unorthodox, but we, we've essentially passed now a really unique budget. It's, it's, or going to pass, I would hope, a really unique budget. It's a housing budget. And if I may to my counterpart, Counsel Wrench, I'm just really curious. You voted no on the previous motion for housing, yet you've declared that housing is your big initiative and I think you're going to vote no for the vote. And just out of my own curiosity, I'd love to know why.
I don't actually know if it's appropriate for counselors to be speaking towards each other for this. I think the last vote that we took was to take money from the rate stabilization reserve to lower the tax levy. That's why I voted no. I'm going to vote no on this budget and we'll, we'll have a recorded vote, mainly because I don't think we took any tough decisions today. We, we simply kicked the can down the road. I, I am encouraged that we've, we're spending, or we're allocating money to a housing reserve. I think that's great. I, I'm actually really surprised that we're going to do that. And I think that having less money in the rate stabilization reserve is great because over the course of this year and in the future, we're going to have to be more careful on how we spend that money. But again, I, I'm going to vote no on the budget. I'm going to put my name on it, mainly because we didn't do anything tonight. We didn't take any tough decisions. We basically said, we're going to do everything and we're going to figure it out. We know what's coming next year. We know what's coming down the road. I guess we'll figure it out then.
Thank you, Counsel Wrench. I think Amy needs to say something at the moment.
Sorry, I was just going to read the motion because it needs to include the actual dollar amount. So it's that the 2025 budget with tax levy requirements of $50,170,530 be approved.
It's a big number. Okay. James, you have a.
Just one final comment, just to pick up on Counsel Wrench's comment. So the first thing I want to say is, I do want to commend Counselors Taylor and Post for making this a housing budget, right? We had identified this as a priority, counsel has repeatedly, and we haven't put up money until now to do it. And so when I look back across this term, I can confidently say that we are making progress on a major item. So that makes me happy and proud. My other priority coming in tonight was to try to keep things as affordable as possible for our taxpayers. I don't feel like we got there. I, I'm really disappointed to Counsel Wrench's point. We didn't make the tough decisions. The toughest decision we made was around rain barrels. I think we could have done both. I think we, this could have been a housing budget that also came in with a lower tax levy. That's why I supported Counsel White's proposed, or his motion. So I just wanted to get that on the record.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor Horner?
Yes, sir. I'll, go ahead.
Exactly what is the percentage increase as it stands right now? Exactly what is the percentage increase as it stands right now?
It's 4.21, Earl. As it's shown on the screen.
That's, I don't see a 4.1, I see a, I don't see a 4.21, I see a 5.69.
Yep, go down two more lines, 4.21.
Well, I can't see that.
Probably. So actually, the 5.69 is the revised tax levy, less the growth then. 1.48 brings the net tax levy to 4.21, if you can't see those bottom numbers.
Thank you very kindly.
Thank you. Counselor Solomon?
Thank you, Madam Warden. I will be voting no, only for the reason I like, I quite like the discussion, and I like the budget as well. But I voted for Darren's motion, so I can't actually switch in the middle of the event here and go the other way. Although I'd like to, again, congratulate the people in this room. I like being here. It's kind of a good group. Thank you.
We like you being here, too. Okay, so I've, I heard a call for recorded vote. Sorry, Fred?
I just wanted to respond to Counselor McLean's comment. In addition to the tough decision we made on rain barrels, we made a tough decision on paving the parking lot over the arms of the street.
Glad you're still laughing. Okay. Let's have the recorded vote then, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Warden. Counselor Wrench?
No.
Counselor Solomon?
Nope.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor White?
No.
Counselor Crewman?
Yes.
Counselor Gardhouse?
Yes.
Counselor Garretts?
No.
Counselor Hall is absent. Counselor Hawkins?
No.
Warden Horner?
Yes.
Counselor Little?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
No.
Counselor Mills?
Yes.
Counselor Nix?
Yes.
Counselor Post?
Yes.
And that carries 26 to 6.
Thank you, folks. It's never easy getting through that kind of discussion, but I was really pleased with your engagement tonight. Really happy about how invested you are in this process. Okay, so. No, we're not done. Now, I need a motion. Before, before we move into closed session, staff will place anyone who's not to be in the closed session into a waiting room. Staff will lock the meeting and live stream will stop. And people in the waiting room will see a message that once the meeting is open, they will be brought back in. If anyone tries to log into the meeting, they'll receive a notice that the meeting is locked. Once counsel has made a motion to move back into open session, everyone in the waiting room will be brought back into the meeting, and the live stream will start again. We will now move into closed session.
Madam Warden?
Yes?
Just a small point, and Amy, correct me if I'm wrong. For anyone listening, it is not a simple mathematical equation that you add the increase of the county to the increase of the local municipality.
That is correct.
I think that's important to understand, because we've had residents who've tried to do that, and we've tried to correct them on that.
Thank you, John. May I have a motion to go into closed session under the Municipal Act, Section 239-2D, regarding labor relations or negotiations? Moved by Nix, seconded by Gardhouse. All those in favor?